Call me in the order of the pledge of allegiance.
The reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
People have had a chance to look at the bills?
Yes.
They have a motion to accept?
I'm here. I'll start then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carry on. We'll open up the public hearing then for the budgets.
Um, well, I know I've been sick and I haven't really gotten to be a part of the discussion for much of the budget here, so I have some different questions and some thoughts um that I've just been thinking about. Um, I guess one of my questions is I haven't seen in it anything for grants and grant writing. Um, and even administrative of grants, I know we have at least one um that's out right now. So I didn't know how that's going to be administered, where the cost for that's going to be. Um, if there's any thought like, okay, here are grants that we want to get, we want to look at stuff for the wastewater treatment plant. I know that there was a lot and the last meeting of like that crisis is just like for all this stuff that has to go on, so um I didn't know if there was any plan for that and where money from that would come or.
I can't answer that right now because I believe they come, the LaBella Associates, Clark Patterson Lee, they get all the state grant information in probably the first part of May. And then they come here with that information and sit down with the uh with me and let me know what is available, if anything's available for the grants. And some grants, like Clark Patterson Lee has written those grants, so there's no money involved there. Uh, LaBella, uh depending on what they bring forward, we may have to pay for our grant.
So where, like where does money for that come from if there's, are there like you're hoping to be able to do that or are you saying, well, right now we're not going to vote for grants?
I'm, I'm going to attempt to do it.
You're going to write them? Okay, I wasn't sure.
I'll attempt to do it.
Okay. So that means be any additional fees like that, okay. Um, and then I know I've had numerous people um communicate with me that they're concerned about the increase in taxes. Um, and then I also have, I'm concerned as well as people have come and talked to me about the concern in the increase in salaries and breaking the union contract and what that means um for that. Like just as a whole, breaking a contract isn't really a good thing. Um, and if we break the contract and raise um salaries, that just means for us that then that entire contract is broken and we have to renegotiate that unless we sign a different, a document that the lawyer has put um together. Um, so I just like, that's something that I think is really important that we need to talk about is breaking a contract. Is that something that we want to do? Have we gone forward with talking with the union? Have we talked to our lawyer? Have we talked to that and gotten all those things together? Because otherwise that's pretty bad to break a contract. Um, even if it is, I mean, it's a positive, yes, we're giving them a raise, but it's still breaking a contract. And what does that look like on the village, on all of us and um on our residents? And also just looking at, we are like, yes, we're suffering with inflation, but like those guys have signed a contract saying that they will accept two percent for the next two years, they've already, one year in, I believe. Um, but we have a lot of residents on fixed incomes, um and they're not getting a raise. Um, so just, those are things that I've been thinking about. Um, those are things that I wanted to bring forward, of concerns that have been brought to me and concerns that I have as well, so.
I know personally, I feel, I feel our employees are worth an extra one percent. Uh, we value our employees here, they do a great job for us. They're uh, when I look at the municipal that we work with, there's a, just, you know, there's a gap there and we work with these uh, like I said, we work with Churchill all the time, we work with the Towne Virgin guys all the time. Uh, our electric guys, we're not talking pennies here, some of these cases, we're talking dollars difference in salaries. It, it shows good faith that we're willing to give that extra one percent because we want to hang on to what we got here.
And I agree, I think we have excellent employees, I think that they're absolutely fabulous.
We owe it to the residents to keep our good people. As far as the union contract, it's not a matter of opening up the whole contract. I got it here. It's a pretty simple thing to do here, you know, this agreement, here's what the contract says. Section twenty point one, this agreement constitutes the full and complete agreement of the parties and may be altered, changes added to, deleted from, or modified only through voluntary mutual consent. So as long as both parties mutually consent, you can put an addendum to this and saying a one-time deal here, we're going to add one percent, we have one year only, it's as simple as that. We're not opening up this contract and again, it's mutual, both parties have to agree and sign off on it.
So we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to have it signed with, oh, we need to have a legal document saying that that is the one piece that's being presented?
Correct, that piece only.
Yes.
That would, that would be, the only, that would be, yes.
And you'd see a legal, a legal document through a lawyer to state that?
Yes, I would say so. Unless, unless the, like I said, I haven't spoken to the union on this. Unless, we can just mutually sit down together, them and us, it'd be no different than us signing a contract, the mayor sits down, the union rep sits down and you sign off on it and that's it, we don't have a lawyer involved.
I, I'm very sure from different conversations I've had with different people that you have to have that. So I think that's something that needs to be looked into and needs to be considered. Um, because I have contact information from different people that you have to have um from the county, Anita Cleveland said that you have to have a signed memorandum of understanding written up by a lawyer, so that's just something that I, I don't want us to get into a mess where we, you know.
Oh, agree, I agree.
So that needs to be something that happens.
Courtney, do you recall a lawyer being involved when the contract was signed with the mayor and uh, you?
Um, years ago, um, we had a union attorney involved in the contract negotiations. Back when, um, when we started our first article. So it's not a, I mean, the last contract, if you recall, it happened not during the contract negotiations.
But it's also, that's different than, than breaking a contract and changing something in it. It's different to negotiate a contract than it is to just say, hey, we're going to change what's in here, so those are different ways.
We're going to put an addendum to this contract.
Yes, but you just have to go about that the correct way.
And we will.
Joe?
Yeah.
I have twenty-five years of experience as a union rep. You would be reopening the entire contract unless you have a signed MOU and it does require legal consultation.
Okay, then we would do that. We definitely don't want to open a fiscal contract.
No.
We just want to try to help the, the employees here, that's all we're doing.
So this current contract ends at the end of this fiscal year?
Twenty twenty, no, it's twenty twenty-four.
Okay. The first step would be approving the budget though to say, hey, here's what we're going to amend. If we didn't have that in the budget, we couldn't approach you, so this is really just the first step of the process.
Question? But if you approve the budget, yes, is?
You can change anything in that budget, you can change tax rate or what you believe.
But it doesn't, but if you approve the budget tonight, like say, I'll be vote yes, does it indicate that you're in favor of doing what needs to be done and whether it doesn't happen properly, that then, do you have any recourse? Like Emily, right now, you know, she, she said, I'm going to vote for this. But things didn't work out the way they, I can't, I'm not being able to say this correctly, I'm sorry.
I, I think I know what you're saying, if, let's just say the union said, no, we're not going to do an addendum. Um, it would roll back into the general fund like any other unexpendable fund. So maybe you bid twenty thousand dollars on a dump truck, it came in at nineteen, you rolled the remainder back into the budget, into the general fund next year.
But it seems to me that if you're voting on something without really knowing what the total outcome is going to be, it seems like it's setting a negative precedent.
Grace, are you saying that a little more research needs to be done?
I think so.
Okay, all right.
So the current budget has a two percent pay increase?
Yes.
Three? Three, two. Well, we're, if we vote yes.
This is the current contract.
The current contract, that's what I'm asking, two percent. The current union contract.
Correct.
And that's a scheduled increase, correct?
That's a scheduled increase, yes. I don't, I mean, you say you've been in the union all them years. Would you foresee a problem with us doing that with the union?
Without attending to it properly legally, absolutely.
No, no, illegally. Do you think the union's going to say, no, we don't want our union members to have that?
They're probably going to ask what catches.
There is no catch.
But, I mean, that question will probably be asked, yeah.
Our employees are falling farther and farther behind other employees.
I, yeah, I understand that, I would say we can't really compare ourselves to Monroe County municipalities though. We're in a more rural area and the cost of living isn't as high here as say, it might be in Churchill.
They shop at the same stores, I run into them at Wegmans, I run into employees at the C store. Uh, at the bakery, we all shop at the same stores, Robin. I don't think that our gets a discount for gas at the C store and I don't think she gets one at Wegmans when she goes grocery shopping.
They didn't say anybody did.
I'm just telling you that their dollar goes as far as anybody's. And we're not comparing it to Churchill, Churchill's is still way higher than, than here.
Yeah, and Churchill gets that huge lump sum from the landfill.
The village Churchill does not receive any money from the landfill.
No, but town of Raga.
The Ri, town of Raga is a total separate budget, same as it is here from the town of Virgin.
If you, the other point is that with a salary increase, it's not just their wages, it's also all the other benefits that go out in the, and.
Some benefits have gone down, retirement's gone down this year. Courtney, I don't know if you have the numbers handy, but retirement costs have gone down. The, the, the raise that is in the budget is uh less than what the difference is in the retirement cost last year.
But it's the idea of the whole, the whole package. I have always been grateful for all the work that all the village employees do, both office, electric, and whatever assigned. I'm thankful personally, I have a fine record having them here. I don't think any of them is at the point where they're going to look for another job because they want more money. And when I think, and when I think of with benefits and everything else, yeah, I don't know if all of them, this is not office, but I don't know if all of them are getting the same amount. But some of them are making like close to ninety thousand dollars a year. It's nothing, you know, to seem that, and I mean, there are people living, there are people living um less than ten thousand a year. And I have done that until just recently. Um, so there's a wide disparity there. And I, I'm sure that they'd be grateful to get that increase, but if they don't get it, I don't think you're going to get a lot of problems because that, that wasn't, that just wasn't in the package to begin with. They agreed to that contract and that's it, and it's always nice to get more. But when you think about all the ramifications, um what else it involves as far as benefits and as Emily stated about people here and, and what they're having to live with. And yes, everybody's paying the same amount for gas, whether they're making ten thousand a year or ninety thousand dollars a year. But to say, to say that this is really imperative to do for this year, it could really wait a year and then, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Things are not getting better, they're getting worse, so how are you going to accommodate this money? And, and there are going to be other things coming up. And just for instance, you said you're going to try to work grants, it's wonderful, but you might need help. And if you need that help, you're going to have to pay for it. Where, in the assembly, said where's the money going to come from to pay for that? To do this contract and to change that and to do that legally, you also have to involve the attorney. That's extra fees for the attorney, have you provide for that? And talking about this and wanting to go ahead and vote on this, you haven't even talked to the union yet. If you're proposing all of this, wouldn't, wouldn't it make more sense if you'd had a conversation with the union to get all the information that you truly need to have and then go forward from there? And if, you know, it's decided to go ahead with it, so be it. But to have all of that down pat to know exactly what you're dealing with, not working so much in the blind and then trying to just get things straightened up.
Well, I didn't because it's not finalized, so I didn't want to go to the union until it was finalized, until I really hit something definite.
But you still have to have the union's perspective on that and what they would say and what they would do. I mean, when, when you do, when you have a contract, when you're doing negotiations, you don't wait until you have everything you decide you want to do before you talk to, to the union. It's, it's, it's a co-mingle, it's talking things over together and then going back and forth and finally making an agreement and signing it. This is just saying that you have to have everything done here, even though you don't have all the information you truly need before you approach the union. It doesn't seem to make sense. Not when you're negotiating other years with the union and getting, you know, knowing that there are certain parameters that have to be set. And then with the information that Robin's giving you, with having experience with negotiating with unions in the, it, again, it doesn't make sense that you should be going ahead and making a commitment to something when you don't really have all the information.
No union's going to turn this down. They want, they want the best for their union members. There's no way they're going to turn this down, they're going to thank us.
Thank you, but what's going to open up, what kind of a precedent are you setting by doing that?
I'm not setting a precedent, it's one time.
It will be setting a precedent, yes, if you've done it one time, it's something that could be done again.
Yes, it could be done again.
Okay, so you're setting a precedent if you do it.
Anything could be a precedent then, anything could be done again. And another thing I want to bring up, we don't have a DPW supervisor here.
You don't need one.
Oh, you don't need one.
You don't need it.
Who's doing all, who's picked up the slack for that now? Our employees.
The employees have done it with the previous mayor and, and you would have said that you want to do the best for the village, so I would assume that you would do as much, you would try to do the same thing, meeting with the employees and seeing what needs to be done and assessing to see if something extra has to be done. But remember, you don't have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for a DPW supervisor if it's necessary.
Why didn't we have one for the last fifty years? How did we have the money in there to pay one for the last fifty years? You tell me.
They did it, but it didn't do you any good, so the money that got saved and was being able to put to other use for things in the village.
How do you know it didn't do us any good? You're still, you're saying when I was superintendent here, it didn't do any good?
No, you weren't superintendent of the whole village.
Yes, I was.
You were, also, I, I apologize, I apologize. Well, but you need, but, but the fact remains is that for eight years, well, no, I take that back, probably for about four years, probably. Yeah, you did not have a DPW supervisor, everything functioned very well, the men did their jobs. As far as I know, there were no major complaints, again, I was always grateful for what they were doing. It got done, they worked hand in hand together. And um, again, it was money that didn't have to be expended for on one individual.
Again, well, Grace, other people are picking up the slack of that job. Courtney is, the mayor is, all the employees are, they're.
But they don't get in their pants and it worked, it's worked. Did, did you see anybody leave? It's worked and it's worked well.
I, I just came back from a seminar, people are jumping ship everywhere in the unions.
But they're not coming to you.
What? I haven't got, they will.
And if they do, there's plenty of people who would probably come up and take the jobs because this is a darn good job for any village employee.
Guys, what it costs to train a lineman, it's, it's thirty grand to train a lineman.
But you, you're not fixing it, are you?
You're not going to get just an office, office administrator to just come in and say, do the ladies' jobs here.
I understand your call, please don't talk down to me.
I'm not talking down to you, I'm just telling you, you're not going to get just anybody off the street to do any of the jobs.
No, but you know what, if something happens and somebody left, you would manage, you would have to find a way to do it somehow, so all I'm saying in the long run is whatever extra funds, if there are any extra funds, you need to be aware that you might need money for other things that you're not planning on, and if that comes up, then you have to make arrangements to move things around. And if you don't have to have an unnecessary expenditure at this time, when things are tight, that would seem to be the best thing to be doing, to be on the cautious side. And as far as linemen goes, I know all the years that I've been here and people have been um taking training courses and all of that, and as you've said and Joe has said and the previous mayor has always said, you've always had a good working relationship with the other villagers around, and if you get in a tight bind for a short period of time, there's somebody that will come and, and watch your back and help you out until you're able to straighten it out because everybody here does the same thing for them and they need help too. So it's not like you're in a tight bind and you have to be pulling your hair out trying to figure out how are you going to keep the employees there right now.
You're in a tight bind and there's a storm or there's something pressing where all your neighbors are busy, you're in a bind. You can't borrow a snowpaw from anybody when there's a snowstorm here unless it's from way outside of the storm area. That's our point, Grace, we, we, all we're trying to do is keep the people we have.
And, and you are keeping the people you have, and I can't, I, I can't see that one of them is going, because none of this was expected on their end. And I can't believe that any single one of them right now who is still in this job will say, if I don't get that one percent raise, I'm leaving. And if I'm wrong, I'm going to bat my face and I'm going to apologize.
If, if, have either of the linemen told you that they're looking for other work?
I know one of them's interviewed with another municipality probably two years ago.
The trouble we got, James and Robin, is the investor owns are gobbling up all, all the municipal linemen. They're pretty much in the state. And we, we can't compete with their wages.
But that's what I'm wondering.
Fifty dollars an hour is going right now at RG&E, the National Grid.
Fairport.
Fairport, Spencer Park's not far behind now.
Yeah, they just lost somebody at RG&E.
Yeah, they're, everybody's jumping ship, you know, it's.
I, I'm just wondering if, so the last fiscal year from June of twenty twenty to May of twenty twenty-one, the lineman's base salary was almost seventy thousand dollars. Is seven hundred dollars a, a year going to make them stay or jump? If that, if that one percent?
I, I, I agree with what, what she's saying is they do like it here, you know, we, we're a tight-knit kind of a family here. And uh, we do offer some more flexibility than an investor owned would, would, you know, allow, so it's good for a family. But when things get tighter and tighter and tighter, and I just heard, I just heard Matt, he's like, oh, it's forty dollars a week now, just for me to come to work and gas now. You know, and when, when I hear that, I go, how, how long are you going to stretch until you say, I'm going to jump ship? I'm, I'm going to RG&E, all his friends are at RG&E, you know? He's a key guy here now, we've got a lot of time and money invested in him, he's a class, class A lineman now.
But would seven hundred dollars a year make him stay? But I guess that's the question.
It's a little closer.
It's, it's closer and it's closer to what, it's not, it's not where even Churchill is, but at least it's, it's respectable then, he would be uh, oh, it's hard to say because he's a dollar seventy-nine away from what Churchill's paying. But then with his health insurance at twenty-eight percent copay, uh, they have a ten percent copay, the town has a ten percent copay, so we got one of the highest copays in the whole state.
But if you go to private industry, that's about right.
Private industry, but not municipal.
No, but if they were to go to RG&E, that's the percentage that they would be paying now probably.
Yeah, but you're also making a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand a year.
I think the biggest thing is we all recognize that our employees are priceless, and that's the problem. We have priceless employees, we will never be able to pay them totally what they deserve. Because we are a little village. Um, and we have the most fantastic people working for us across the board in every department. But I think, for me at least, when I look at it, it really comes down to, we have made a contract for three years. We signed a contract for three years. Is one percent for one year worth all of that of breaking it? The precedent that it sets of breaking a contract? I, I know um from what's been told to me and talking to the county, it's like, you just, you don't break the contract, you don't change it. So that's something that concerns me. I, I think all of our employees deserve one percent, they deserve more than that one percent. Like, I mean, you look at all the different municipalities, what people are making, and yes, they make less. But I also know that you look at every teacher in the state and I'm making less than every teacher in the state. There are jobs that you do because you love your job and you love where you are. And so that does pay for some of it. You know, so we have to, and we also have to be realistic about, okay, yes, our employees need to survive, they need money, but also this is not our money, we're not making this money. You and I and everyone here are paying that money too, so we have to have that balance. So I think like that's really something to look at, is like, is this worth breaking the contract for and everything that that entails? I don't think it's a discussion of whether or not our employees deserve it and, you know, so that's just, that's my major concern.
Could I make a suggestion? Rather than increasing the salary, give a bonus equal to one percent in the salary? That way you're not breaking the contract. You don't have all the legal fees associated with that. For consideration.
Courtney, how much are we talking here?
Four.
We're seven employees.
So forty.
Forty-three hundred dollars.
Forty-three hundred dollars, how much of that comes out of the electric?
Eleven hundred sixty-nine seventy-five.
How much?
Eleven hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
What, the legal fees?
And five of our employees are non-union, is that, is that right, or is it four?
There's four of us.
There's four non-union and four union, okay, so it's split at now.
Do you know what the legal fees would be? Like, what's the hourly attorney fee that we pay? How much?
It's over a hundred dollars, I think.
In the margin of interest?
Well, it's more than that.
It's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, yeah, I said it's over a hundred, yeah, I think, same, hundred and fifty.
Courtney, take my salary and pay for this lawyer. I won't take a paycheck until the lawyer's paid for, this gets cleared up. There's no impact to the budget, I'm sorry. You satisfied with that?
Are you talking to me?
Uh, with everybody, I'm giving up my salary to pay for this attorney fee, whatever I may be, I won't take a paycheck. We're talking about one percent, we're talking twenty cents an hour, we're talking, I don't know if an employee's even going to notice it in their direct deposit.
It will pay for my extra gas, that's it.
How much, I'm sorry?
It's going to pay for my extra gas, that's it.
Exactly, it's a pass-through.
It is.
Exactly.
It is an absolute pass-through.
Over increase in taxes?
Which I, I'm, I'm myself paying for.
It'll be a pass-through for the rest of the employees as well.
I just think you have to look at it like this. I'm a taxpayer and I'm an employee, so I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth here, right? At the end of the day, I came from the private sector. In the private sector, the biggest asset that we ever had was our employees. And currently, we have an incredible staff. We make it look easy, I'm going to be honest. It doesn't matter what department, we quietly, if anybody read the Village of Churchville's mayor's message, I think you should read it. We quietly make things happen. The wastewater treatment plant runs, your snow gets plowed, the sidewalks are clean, all before you wake up. The bills are sent out quietly, we collect from shut-offs, we shut people off quietly, we do it all quietly. But we do our jobs and we save you money. At the end of the day, the things that we do as employees here is saving money in the. At the end of the day, the things that we do as employees here is saving money in the budget. So for me, as a taxpayer, I, even if I didn't work here, I would highly recommend a three percent increase. I know that the employees didn't take an increase during COVID, I know the employees worked through COVID, we delivered your meals. We did all of that, very quietly, so, you know, sometimes we have to think outside the box. Even when we were in a municipality. Right, like, there are ways that we, our power stayed on when no one else's power stayed on. Why did that happen? Because the linemen are out there checking the lines all the time. We were the only place that had power. When our our wastewater treatment operator, ten days without power, he was coming to shower at the plant. But we had our power on, why? Because the linemen are out there doing their jobs quietly all the time. So, I mean, that's what I have to say about it, I guess.
Thank you.
And that's what I was bringing up about not having a supervisor. The the employees pick up all that slack and they make it look easy. Because things still do get done, yes, but everyone's taking on the responsibilities, so.
So what if we did, as Robin suggested, a one percent, like that bonus? Can we do it as a bonus and then we don't have to do the additional lawyer fees, you guys wouldn't have to feel like you have to put that up, is that something that's a problem, is that bad?
But do it in a separate check and that was a paycheck, so it doesn't all get eaten up with taxes.
I don't have a problem paying for the lawyer.
I'll pay.
Because-
Can I pay? I'll I'll pay a cash order today, what do you need? This is crazy to argue an overall one percent raise. I I totally get the spitting income, my mother's one. She also got a six percent raise in her social security, like anybody else that's on it. Welfare goes up all the time. But school's not too worried about taking a little more tax every year. We're still at the two percent. This doesn't, this isn't gonna impact it.
Just a piece of information, Paul. People did give a six percent increase in their social security, but their Medicare part B premiums went up and ate most of that money, if not all of it.
I understand that, and I understand that. It's a pass through, same as what it is gas will be.
Yes.
I have a question, guys.
Cindy.
What about the money, the extra money that's coming in from the higher assessed values of the homes? I went back and looked at my village taxes, and each year they're going up, because the assessments go up every single year. And the way they're selling, they're gonna go up even more. So where's that money entered into the budget, that extra money?
Um, well, it's it's a little hard to explain because I I literally have, I'm gonna have to show you on the computer system that the state uses. It's not one plus one equals two when it comes to these things.
I can hear you.
So it it's not one plus one, uh, when it comes to calculating, so just because your, uh, tax assessment goes up, doesn't mean, also doesn't mean your, our our tax, uh, levy will go up. So the board decides the tax levy, sort of. But the state tells you, like, on the computer, exactly the most you can, you can levy, right? So in that calculation that they tell us, we can, we can increase those a whole number of things, including, uh, what I put in, what our total assessment is. So, and also, you know, the cost of living adjustment, or the two percent, and the cap, tax cap, whichever's less. So I I I know a lot of people don't know about that and and they don't really, you know, kind of understand how it works, but it really is a more of a calculation than it is, uh, the taxes go up. So just because the taxes are gonna go, because, just because the tax, the, I'm sorry, the assessment is gonna go up so much next year, doesn't necessarily mean, um, you're, you're, it's it's gonna go up. Because when we do that, put the information in the calc, in the calculation and they tell me how much the max is, that takes all that stuff into consideration. And then at that point, the board decides, you know, what, how how much of that, so, that's just the maximum that the board can do. And after that, they can decrease it if they want to, or, you know, because you don't have to give them the full amount. And there's a second form that I fill out, which is a constitution, constitutional tax limit form. And on that one, they specifically, uh, tell you what the maximum you could do overall, right? Um, if you like broke the tax limit and the tax cap and we did it, I don't know, probably ten years ago where we, uh, broke over the tax limit, went more than two percent. We had to pass, we had to pass a law, a local law to do that. So that one tells us what the thing is, right, so, um, and, so it it's more complex when just, uh, because this assessment goes up, our taxes go up. Because if you, if you look at the total-
But that's the way, that's the way it is, though. When your ta, assessment goes up, your taxes go up, it's a, it's a given. It's the way it works.
Your rate goes down here, the rate, which is typically-
Right.
As the assessment goes up, the rate typically goes down.
There's no, well, I checked my last three years, the rate didn't go down.
Well, that's because, because the, that calculation and we, 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 uh, raised taxes per that calculation, what the, the state set you could. I I I I know it's, it's, and I,
All I know is people complain about this all the time, about the assessments going up and up and up, and the taxes are going up and up and up.
So you're saying-
And that's true.
Are you saying that the higher the tax assessment on your home is, like the assessed value, the lower your tax rate is?
No, no. So, there's a fear program that the state has us to use to input all this information, so they, they can tell us what we can, uh, put on here as for taxes for like line number one, one-on-one, real property tax, right? So they tell us, what within this calcul, within this formula, what the most we can, and then takes into, uh, account those things and the, uh, the rate, um, some towns, um, I don't have a hundred percent rate, uh, what they call it, Cindy, when you don't, you don't, um-
Full assessed value?
Right. So it takes all that stuff into account. So this calculation tells me exactly what the state will allow to be the highest. And 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 again, I I, um, showed those guys today in my office how it would work, so they could see it. Um, and I'd be happy to show you guys what that information and what you're, you're also. So I said, I guess what, you know, Paul's saying is, so assessments might go up, and if you remember, our tax rate, uh, right now is five dollars and, um,
Fifty-nine.
Five, fifty-nine per thousand. A few years ago, it was six point, six dollars and two cents, right? So when your, the, the total assessment goes up, but you only assess, you know, so say your, your, your total assessed value for the whole village is fifty million dollars, and then you don't, you only raise, you know, taxes and it comes out to, you know, so, uh, say last year, uh, say two hundred ninety, right? So, the, the tax assessment, you know, how much do you think it's gonna go up in next year? So I say four or five million for the village? Based on everybody's, right? So, the, the, the state's not gonna let us, say, all, you know, get a huge windfall by keeping our rate at five dollars and fifty-nine cents per thousand.
So you do adjust it down.
And then, then, you know, we get all that money, you know, and so then we're, then we're getting not just sixty-five hundred, we're getting tens of thousands of extra dollars because of the assessment going up. So in this calculation, the, the, the state takes all that into consideration. So that's why, over the past few years, when, you know, it was, when, when they do the last, um, the set, last assessment increased.
Last year?
La- last year.
And we just got another one to ship?
Just got one, yeah.
Right, so that's why our, actual, our tax rate went down, because we were actually, you know, percentage of the, the, the assessment to the rate is decreased.
But it still doesn't account for your, I hate to harp on this, but it still doesn't account for your village's taxes going up every year, they go up every year.
Right, it's because, it's because we meant, we, we, um, did the two percent for the, the, we did the highest amount that the state allows for this class, except for la- last year, with because of COVID, we took that up. But all the other years, um, we, we put in the mo, the most, because like I said, sometimes it's two percent, and sometimes it's cost of living adjustment, which, whichever is less. So one year was only point five eight. So we can only raise taxes by point five eight, that's not point five eight of the two hundred ninety thousand, that's point five eight of the tax rate, which, you know, right now is five point, five dollars and fifty-nine cents per thousand. So, you know, you're only increasing a half percent of five dollars and fifty-six cents. So if you, so again, we're increasing taxes every year, but this is the highest we can raise taxes. And if, if we were allowed to do what you're saying and keep our tax rate, uh, level, and then have, you know, the tax, the, the assessment go up five million dollars, you know, that's gonna, what's that, you know, what's, what's five, if I take five million and, um, five dollars and sixty cents per thousand? There's not, they're not, they're not gonna let us get, you know, that mu, you know, take huge, huge something like that.
And it's hard, raising the taxes two percent this year gives the village as a whole six thousand five hundred dollars. So it's, like-
Well, that's nothing, why even bother doing it then?
And that's, that's like the most we can get every, like, if we, two percent is the highest we can ever raise. I think was it one year, maybe two point five percent? Like, it's really low, and so like even you raise the taxes two percent, and you're like, oh my goodness, that's so much, two percent. But then when you look at how much it makes, you're like, oh, it's sixty-five hundred dollars for the whole village. So it's, it's kind of weird.
And when you think of what it costs to do a road or sidewalks, I mean, that doesn't go, so we have to do it though, Cindy, just because if you don't, you go year after year without that little increase, before you know it, you're ten, fifteen, twenty percent behind, now, now you're out there asking, you know, you, you're behind the eight ball, and so we're just trying to-
Yeah, aces. If you just take out that little, and you're right, I mean, a lot, there's one year where, specifically, the point five eight, we raised taxes by four hundred and two dollars, right? But, but we, you know, why, was it different? What's the point, right? And I kind of thought about that, but, I mean, it's just taking that little bit while you can, because when I first got here, it had been eight or ten years since they had raised taxes at all. You know, and at that time, the, um, retirement, the economy was kind of bad, so the retirement, it cost us a lot, a lot of money. And because we had a lot of, you know, um, people with, you know, uh, lower-tiered people, you know, whom we had to contribute more for. So because they didn't do any taxes at all for the ten years, you know, they get felt, felt more and more in the behind, and if you remember, that one year, we raised taxes twelve percent, just to try to catch up. And I said, you know, that's, that's gotta be the last time we ever do that, because that's just wrong to do to people. To just, I mean, it really, and twelve percent of our tax rate still wasn't a huge amount, but you don't want to do that to everybody and just pull off and win. So you just take that little bit at a time, small amounts, and as you go, and it'll slowly add up. Hope I explained it good, I- It is, and like I said, if you want to see that, the calculation and the-
I would love to, actually.
Then I'll, I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Because I was worried there for a while, because, um, I mean, our tax rate was at six dollars and, uh, two cents per thousand. And people were like, whoa, you know, why is it so high? You got your, you know, you have the police department or something? But, you know, it's hard in a small village when you're, you know, people don't take into account assessments, right? So, um, like Churchville's ta, uh, tax rate could be half of ours, because, or even less, because their, us, total assessed value, their, their, um, their village is, you know, insanely high. So it's not, it's percentages of that village, that village, you know, it's like if you want, uh, ten percent of a thousand, or you want one percent of a million, you, you, you know, it, it, the percentage is hard to go by. And, you know, in a small village like this, it's gonna be higher, and it just seems higher, because it's, you know, that's what we have to raise to get the money.
He's gotta remember too, the, the electric rates of, of those are gonna be going up. Um, the sewer is two hundred and six dollars tapped onto the, and that's not gonna stay the same either, that's bound to go up. I mean, come on, really? Where do we stop?
Unfortunately, a lot of it, the state in New York mandates fire electric's gonna keep going up. Nothing we have control over.
It really goes the same as sewer, you know, a lot of the projects that we're doing right now up there is because of the, of the state mandate for the UV, you know, we have to put the UV in.
Is there anything else? Any else, anybody on the board, maybe else?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a motion to accept these budgets? With the, uh, or that, uh, no, uh, no money will be allocated by any lawyer fees?
What second, third?
Me and Paul have offered to offset any legal fees, but no impact on the village.
I know. Could we look into, like, what, I mean, I hate to, for you guys to have to do something, if we could do just like a bonus, I know.
This is what it is, I mean, how long's it gonna take to, to, and, and, two hours, three hours?
I don't know, I'm just, I, I'm very curious about that, so.
It's only about five hours, it is worth it.
This is the implications of breaking a contract, but I guess that's just me, so.
You know, the, the only trouble with the bonus, it doesn't stay with the employees year after year. It's funny, you get, we did a bonus during the COVID, the employees didn't take a, a raise that year, they made the contract for the year and they took the bonus. Once you get the bonus, you get it, and money comes out of it, and it's kind of forgotten. And you still look at the numbers and when you're working next to, you know, the other guys in the other town, you, you, what do you make an hour now? It's still, you still got that disparity between the two, you know, it's always there. It's not like, oh, but, you know, I got a bonus two years ago, you know, you didn't get that, so. I think, I think the extra one percent helps the employees, and that's why I'd like to see them get, get the extra. So it carries on, and they go on.
It's in shadow. Shows appreciation.
Yeah, it shows, this one, uh, that's, that's right, George, I'm thinking, you know, at least the employees, and you'll say, hey, at least, they're trying, you know, they're looking out for us, trying.
Couldn't the bonus be a yearly thing and then you're not fooling around with the contract? Because that is part of my big concern, is the fact that you're breaking the contract and you just don't normally do something like that. It doesn't put, it doesn't appear to put the village in good light, that, again, that's my opinion. And if you could avoid that and still give them money, because I would be first degree, they deserve more money, I know they do, they work hard. But, um, the ramifications of breaking a contract and that type of thing, if they handled it differently, why, why not? And nobody could say that next year, you couldn't give them a bonus again too, maybe even a larger one. And then contracts can be coming up in one more year. And then you negotiate for better prices, if, you know, if it's workable. It, this would seem to avoid some negative things that you don't need to do and still amount to the same thing. But this would seem to avoid some negative things that you don't need to do and still amount to the same thing. And nobody can dictate how people use their bonuses, but if it amounts to seven hundred dollars and they're gonna get a bonus, then how they use it, it's, it's their prerogative as to how they use their money. And I know it's not forgotten, I'm sure it would still be appreciated very much.
So you're, Grace, I got you right, you're saying the, you, the employees of the village, they aren't union, they get, they get the percentage increase, they get the three. But the union members under the contract, they would stay at the two, right? And then they would get a bonus. That's, if I got you right.
Well, what you're saying is you were going to be giving a raise across the board to union and non-union. So to overcome, break, you know, the union contract, then everybody, if everybody was gonna be getting a raise, then everybody should get the bonus if you're going to avoid breaking the contract. So I'm not saying only four should get it and four shouldn't, no. Because you're gonna do it across the board. But again, if you can avoid a, a negative perspective on the village, I'm not sure if I knew which right words, then, then why not? So no, everybody.
So you.
Whatever you were gonna give across the board, if you're gonna do it in a bonus, that's, that's what should be done. I'm not saying that they should, that some should get it and some shouldn't, no.
So you're saying every employee should get a bonus rather than the increase? Is that what you're saying?
If you can do it that way.
I'm not in favor of that.
Well, I know you're not in favor of that, but I'm saying that, getting back, Emily's reservation is about a contract and, and the ramifications of doing that. And that's the point that I was trying to make before, not that the employees were not deserving, they're certainly deserving. That is never my intention or implication, I hope they all understand that. But the idea of, of breaking a contract and anybody that I've ever talked to, and I have a daughter who works with contracts and they are too, and, and the thought there was like one and a quarter, no, you just don't do that. Find other ways to handle things if you possibly can, because it's just not good reputation for the village, so.
Are we breaking the contract or amending the contract? Should we seek counsel?
Amending.
The term break, it doesn't sound right to me.
But if you're amending it, then you have to, then you still have to do it the proper way and you should be doing it with an attorney and that type of thing. And yes, Paul, I know, I know you, I know you've made the gesture, you know, to do, to do taxes.
Yeah, we wanna do that, we wanna do legally, not just backdoor and something.
But if you don't have to do it that way, with this suggestion, that that would be a workable situation, that would be the better way to do it. It was seen as simple.
Can, can I, uh, just throw out maybe a compromise? Um, so when you put stuff, you know, like Paul said earlier, the budget can be changed. Uh, the only thing you can't change is the tax levy.
I'm sorry, what?
The tax levy, how much you can charge taxes. Um, so you can change the budget. So a- as for tonight, um, if, if we live the finances, the budget the way it is, with the understanding and with the, um, writer, that, um, we have maybe a couple of board members together, maybe not only, and, and Joe can work together on, um, talking with the attorney, talking with the union, seeing how, um, i- i- how that works. And if it's a problem, how much it can cost. And then kind of working through that and comparing the bonus idea with that, and getting all the information with the union. So we have two options. And, and the reason I say this is because, so the, really, the budget needs to pass, be passed tonight. Because, um, if it's not by state law, if the budget's not passed by May first, it just automatically becomes the budget. So that's, so this, that, just my.
What becomes the budget?
So the tentative budget becomes the official budget come May first. So that's, that's my proposal, um, pa- pass the budget, um, with the, um, as the way it is, but with the, um, stipulation that, that, that piece be looked into and, and decided on, um, at the next meeting on the eleventh.
Okay, so a question. So Barb and Renee, I know this is kind of putting you on the spot, but as employees, which would you prefer, a bonus or a percentage?
Percentage.
Percentage.
Because of the retirement consideration?
There's a lot of considerations.
Taxes eat the heck out of you. A bonus check is half.
It, it is. I mean, we, we took a bonus in COVID, so we missed an increase there. So now the increase that we're getting, whatever that might be, is less than what it would have been because we've already missed an increase because of a bonus. So, I mean, we don't make what the linemen make, we don't make what the union guys make. So for us, it's important to have a percentage.
And even if, like, if we look into it, I, like, I'm all for looking into that and seeing, you know, how it really works with you and to see, cause I, to me, there's just a lot of questions of like, what are the ramifications? You know, like, you drop a pebble and it goes like this, so like, I just wanna make sure what, what it looks like. And I have no problem saying like, okay, well, this year, if we couldn't do the, we had to do a bonus, we couldn't get around changing a contract to say, okay, when we start a new contract, let's add in that percentage that they lost. And like, do a bigger raise or something like that, you know? And, and say like, you know, if we have to for two years do bonuses and then add in a bigger raise to do that, but like, to look around. Cause I just don't wanna get all of a sudden find out, like, we did this and this is bad. Um, maybe it's not bad, maybe nothing, like, maybe it's fine, we just do the lawyer fees and it's all done, that's done, but I just.
I think it's simpler than you think. That's okay if your board doesn't change. You can guarantee the same people that are agreeing to it tonight are gonna be here two or three years from now when the contract comes up. You can't do that. We only have power this year, this, this room.
Yeah, so we'll say that just because it's, the wages are in the budget, uh, doesn't mean the board has to give them.
I see. What did you say, Greg?
Uh, just because the, the wages are in a budget, doesn't mean the, the board has to, uh, give them.
Even if, even if you approve the budget?
You can do whatever you want with the money. You can throw this whole plan right out and, and pay the money, if you wanted to, you can just throw it off.
We'll come out.
Well, it's.
This is just a plan.
Yeah.
So if, to, you know, to change a budget, to make, to, if to change, to change a budget in, in the future, um, it would have to be of, of the board to make any changes. Just for time consideration and for compromise, that's.
This is back in the contract for two thousand eight, two thousand nine, they actually, on the final of it, they gave out a lump sum at that time. And they, they made a note on the, on the, on the scale for all the wages. Says the wastewater plant operator and MEO shall receive a one-time six hundred lump sum payment in front of these, sees not added to the base for the fiscal year. So it would be something, you know, be added, something like that language, be put up right below here. Should be pretty simple.
But that's not what you're proposing, you're.
No, I'm just saying that's what they did back in two thousand eight. Is there any further discussion? There being none? I'll entertain a motion. Paul, you wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget as rep. With the, uh, rider that the, we seek legal counsel and, uh, ensure that the, we don't open up some sort of Pandora's box with the, with the union.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. We got the, uh, energy efficiency.
Yep.
Uh, so a little bit of beef. There's one change on the beef budget from the last time we were here.
And that, that's what behind your hand is still from last week.
And there's a new one?
Yeah. Well, just in the back.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I did a packet from last week.
Thank you.
We added the, uh, speed reduction size for sixty-five hundred dollars into the budget. Those are for solar powered LED, uh, traffic devices. And I'd like to see put on Rochester Street, both ends.
That's for two minutes, Joe?
Yeah. Did you get back another quote, Paul, on those?
No, I hate that. I'm not sure that other person's still, is with the company.
We're trying to get a, a kind of a discount out, and Churchill's looking to buy two of them, so we're trying to work a discount on buying more of them, so hopefully that can work out. I've also got a meeting May sixth with the sheriff. He's coming out here with the deputy who patrols this area, and we'll, we'll discuss, uh, the speeding too.